Almighty Father, we gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral, as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us. And always may we act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. May be seated. All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:33 PM on December 18th, Tuesday. Can I have roll call, please?
Alderman Tylek.
Here.
Peckerro.
Here.
Berube.
Here.
Braun.
Here.
Zedzolka.
Here.
Mayor Arthur Pappas is absent. Also present is City Attorney Luke Brown.
All right, at this point, we're going to start off with a couple of things. We're going to, we have some prizes to give out, but we're going to start with our food drive here.
Mr. Robinson here. Sir, would you like to come up and explain the peanut butter jelly?
I sure can, and thank you for inviting me to speak to everyone today. Hi, my name is Pete Robinson, I'm the founder of the Peanut Butter and Jelly Drive. I don't know if any of you guys have ever heard of it, if you haven't, your students, raise your hands. Couple of you guys, good, well, we're kind of new in this area for where we are. For the upper parts and the other parts of Niagara County, we service literally tens of thousands of people with jars of peanut butter and jelly. It started nine years ago over at the Niagara County Courthouse, where a few of us decided that we were going to be able to, you know, do a good food drive and do a good thing. It morphed into something that we figured was simple, that we could pass the message to everybody and kind of convey a good message at the same time. That was, we only wanted jars of peanut butter jelly and fluff. It's kind of crazy, but think about it, it really works. At first, we thought that we'd just get a couple of jars and we'd give it to the Salvation Army and go on about our business, but within a couple of days, we had met our 50 jar maximum. Within two weeks, we had 1,500 jars. People got the hint. What's so special about this stuff? How many minutes I have, but I'll make this as quick as I can. What's simple about this is that when the power's out and you have hungry and needy people, they can eat this. Some of you might say, well, where's the bread? That's not what we do. That's what Tops is for, that's what Wegland is for, that's what other bakeries are for. What we simply ask is for jars of peanut butter jelly and fluff, so that kids can have a chance to make ends meet, or families that are working poor can make ends meet. Or the shut-ins, that might be your neighbor. Or the students that might be sitting next to your kid, that you might not know they go to a food pantry like Nykamp over here in North Tonawata, where we service 130 families. You know, I have something to brag about, about North Tonawata. Interestingly enough, in one of the censuses, I just checked out, our recent census about December 6th, North Tonawata has a poverty level of about 8%. I saw that, and that's pretty amazing, 8%. Right around 8%, 8%, right around 8%. It's interesting, because in Lockport, where I hail from, in the northern areas, it's about 14.9%. What's really disparaging, Council, is that a few miles away from this very area, you hail in Niagara Falls, a poverty rate of upwards of over the 25th percentile. And people here understand what food, how necessary food is. But the good news is, Council, that we have the tools to win. And how is that? Well, we have good people, and people here in North Tonawata that contribute to our drive, which is this, and I'm really grateful for this, because this is actually going to go to families here in our area. And the good news about our drive is, is that it's 100% volunteer. So, from everybody from getting the jars of peanut butter and learning the lesson from the stores and having your kids put it in the cart, all the way to them getting it to our bins, all the way to our people counting it, all the way to our people distributing it to the people that need it the most, all the way down to us taking it to them and learning the lesson about who our neighbors are. We're from Niagara County, we should be proud of that. We also should be proud that we can boast that we have the tools to win to feed our most eligible and our most hungry. It's without excuse that we shouldn't be doing anything less. And that's what this drive is all about. So, in the future, if you look for the red, white, and blue, the red, white, and blue label here, you'll find our names on the bottom there, and then just look for it in the next year or so. We usually start a drive in November, we end on December 10th. It's about a month long, but we do well by everyone we say we do. We don't want money, we only want jars of peanut butter jelly and fluff. And with that, Council, I thank you for your donation, and like I said, this is going to go to a good cause, and it's going to go right back here, so we help our neighbors. It's neighbors helping neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, yeah. Thanks for this, thanks for mentioning Nykamp.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Folks, what we're going to do next is, we have several schools that we sponsored, the Council sponsored a coloring contest, and we did the first, second, and third ward. So, we do have the winners here tonight. So, we're going to start with the first ward. Mark Berube, and he's going to be handing out his prizes for best colored picture by the kindergarten, first grade, and second and third grade.
I do have to say, it was very, very hard in picking winners from each of the grades. We had a number of entrants, and took my wife and I a couple hours sitting there, going through everything to pick it out, but eventually, we did come to a solution. So, have those people come up one at a time. The kindergarten winner for Drake School is Savannah Meyer. Okay, then our first grade winner was Brent Loncar Bacon. And our second grade winner was Aubrey, pronounced it right, Tijakamo. And finally, our third grade winner was Maya Zee.
Okay, Donna Braun will be doing the second award contest winners.
Thank you for everybody that entered at Spruce Elementary, that is my second award, and I really enjoyed looking at all the wonderful little snow globes. I must say that my kindergarten winner, I think his grandma was more excited than anything. I don't know who she is. She was so excited when I called her. So, my kindergarten winner is Liam Herder Livingston. And I have to say that he went over the top because he did glitter on the snow. And I'm very happy that you're here.
Congratulations.
And my first grade winner for Spruce Elementary is Brenne Frank. Good job. Second grade winner, I don't think she was able to come tonight. Her name is Mia Randall, and she had cheerleading practice this evening, and she couldn't miss it. So, I will make sure I get this to her. And my third grade winner at Spruce School is, his sister would like to come up and accept it. It is Cole Frank. Thank you very much, it was very exciting to have the kids.
Lastly, we have Ohio School. I have to say, I think they had about 95 different entries from K through three, so it was very competitive, and it was nice to see the response. We've got some budding artists in this group, I'll tell you, and I was very impressed with what I saw. The first winner that we have for kindergarten in Ohio School is Leanna Muffaletto. And for first grade, we had, our winner was Nicholas Fenden. Next, for second grade, we have Roman Meyer. And lastly, we have Kylie Tomcik from the third grade. Merry Christmas, you won the Christmas contest, here's the certificate. You got a certificate in there with some private papers.
Congratulations. At this point, we have more. Danny Vergilio, in lieu of the mayor, is going to announce the winners for the Christmas light contest that we have every year throughout the city, so I'll let him take over from that.
All right, we got four wards here. First one is going to the Clark Griswold winner, and that's James Hannah.
I think the addresses, so I can go check them out. Do you have the address? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm living here, this is my son. It's his house, because we both live on Drake, and we both decorate our houses. But it was him, this is him, this is our kids. His address is 297. 297, thank you. You're accepting it for Dad. All right.
Congratulations.
All right, the next one is going to the classical category, Ron Delarque.
Congratulations.
The next category is the business one, that's going to Sheer Magic. And then finally is the theme category, and that goes to the small ones.
Congratulations. Good job to all of you, and we've definitely got a festive community between our coloring contests and our light shows, so that's amazing. At this point, I'm going to ask if anybody has any comments based on the agenda for tonight, and the agenda only, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Shall I let the folks leave first?
Sure, if you'd like.
Anybody wants to leave? BJ Van DeWart, 1098 Nash Road. I'd like to address item 14, which is titled "Huge Recreation at Parks." This was brought to the workshop last week, and part of the discussion for increasing the rates was to bring them closer to the standard for the municipal level offerings. We are way less expensive than the other municipalities in the area. And one of the others that was discussed a bit more than the others was the golf course. And during the conversation, it was mentioned that the golf course was a revenue generator. Is better?
Use your singing voice, BJ.
Okay, here we go. Let's do it this way without the mic. I'd like to address item 14, which is titled "Huge Recreation at Parks." This was brought to the workshop last week, and part of the discussion for increasing the rates was to bring them closer to the standard for a municipal level offering. One of the items that was discussed quite a bit more than the others was the golf course. During the conversation, it was mentioned that the golf course was a revenue generator. From reading the mayor's budget, it did not seem to be, so I had several emails and discussions with both Alex and the city accountant about this. It turns out that the golf course is not a revenue generator, it is a revenue sick hole, requiring that it be propped up using taxes to cover the expenses of the course. It has been this way for every year since 2011. And if I understand the numbers correctly, the shortfall in 2018 will be over $350,000. Given this new information, I had expected that the final race would be adjusted upward prior to a vote, yet the numbers in tonight's agenda are the same numbers that were presented last week. I would ask the council that the golf course fee portion of this proposal be tabled at this time for the following reasons. There is time for these fees to be adjusted, as the course does not open for a couple of months. Also discussed at the workshop was the idea that the fees would not be changed for the foreseeable future to provide stability for the course in the short term, and in order to do that, we have to get the fees right now. Golf course fees, if they are sufficient to make the golf course a revenue generator as expected, could also help what is the currently low general fund in 2019. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Alex, would you like to speak on any of that, address any of that?
My proposal did have some fee increases for the general play. A dollar per nine holes for residents and $2 for non-residents, as well as, I believe, a $4 increase for memberships for the season passes. So, there is an increase for that, that was proposed for you guys to vote on today.
Do you have an estimated total of what the overall increase will be for the year, based on those numbers? Like, based on the numbers that we had of people using those services, times the increase?
What would be making? An additional, probably close to $80,000 or $90,000.
And am I right, Alex, in saying that, looking at the budget, as I was reviewing it, that there was a $200,000 profit from the golf course this year?
That is correct, but what BJ is referring to is that doesn't take into account health benefits and retirement benefits from the current golf course by full-time members, as well as any of the retirees. So, when you factor that in, which Amanda from the county office had, he is prepping, saying that it is not a benefit.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on tonight's agenda, and tonight's agenda only, please step forward. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Brenda McGinnis, and I reside at 1180 East Robinson, on the beautiful Deerwood Golf Course. And I am here tonight to speak to the council on behalf of the Deerwood Monday Night Ladies Golf League, which many of my teammates are here tonight. Our team captain Gene was called, received a phone call from Bob on around about November 28th. He informed Gene that the city's season golf sales were down, and that he was directed by his boss to free up some course time for walk-ons. He gave our options to move our tee times for our league from 4:55 to 5:38, while splitting our league in two groups, playing on while splitting our league in two groups, playing on different courses. Four teams starting at 5:38 on one course, and two teams starting at 5:55 on another course. His other option that he gave to us was to call weekly for open tee times. I guess we need to understand as a group how the decision was made to choose our league for restructuring. We've played for five consecutive years at Deerwood for an 18-week league. We currently have 24 women, making up 16. Twelve of those members are North Tonawanda tax-paying residents. We pay a $480 a season fee to the city of North Tonawanda to guarantee our tee times. This has been consistently paid for the five years on time. We are always prompt or early for our tee times. Many times, the starter sends us out early, starting at 4:30 due to the availability of the course. We're a mature group of women who respect the game of golf, along with the golf course. We know that there are leagues that join Deerwood after us. To me, it only makes sense to start with the lowest seniority league to try and rectify the problem that the city feels that we have. Was there other consideration to leagues for being restructured? And how was our league chosen? There are currently 41 golf leagues, only five of which are women. We are the only working women golf league in the city of North Tonawanda that plays in the evenings. It's the only league that there are for working women to play in the evenings in North Tonawanda. We pay league fees, green fees, cart fees, and the majority of us stay for dinner and drinks in the restaurant weekly. We have our league banquet in the banquet room four out of the five past years. We are consistent revenue to the golf course, as well as the restaurant and bar. We don't know of any complaints against our league, and if there were, they weren't addressed with us, and we certainly would have taken care of them if there were. So we don't think that there were any problems as far as complaints about our league. Can the options that we were given be reconsidered? Calling for tee times on a weekly basis for 26 people will never work. It consistently will not work. Later start times will not allow us to finish golf as the sun sets earlier each week. Splitting the league on two different courses defeats the purpose of a league in competitive play. We were really only given three weeks to choose one of these week options. Not a lot of time to effectively come up with a plan to try and move forward with our league. We'd like the opportunity to sit down with Bob and Alex, and we express this interest, to see if we can't figure out a schedule where the teams that joined after us could be moved to rectify the problem. 24 girls, 18 weeks. You'll need 432 golfers to walk on on Monday nights to make up for what we bring to the table as a league. Again, we are consistent revenue to the city and the golf course. Based on these facts, we ask that you reconsider this matter and allow our league to continue on Monday nights and play in the manner that we have in the past five years.
And quick question, did you get my email I sent to Rose and to the others? And in that email, I suggested that Alex would be at the meeting, he may answer some of your questions. But what I didn't hear back was if we could set up a meeting, if we couldn't answer those questions tonight, to try to accommodate you in a better manner. Instead, I mean, and by the way, this isn't on the agenda for tonight, but I'll allow you to speak on it just because we're talking about raising fees. But as I haven't received a response from the two people that I asked to forward to your group, my response as the council president, which was, if we can't come to some sort of agreement, and Alex will come up and say a few things, that I invited you to have a meeting to discuss this. I didn't hear a response. Did you get those emails?
We did.
Oh, okay, good. Because I just thought to myself, well, I guess we'll see you tonight and find out if you, you know, if you're willing to do that.
We are absolutely willing to do that. We certainly want to continue play at Deerwood.
And we're not singling you out. I understand the predicament that you're in. It was just brought to my attention last Tuesday at the workshop, and we're going to do what we can. But I'd like to hear from Alex, because he did bring up some good points. You guys weren't there. So if we could just have him talk about how he does this and the process, real quick. I think that I'd appreciate that, and then we could definitely set something up to be. So we're willing to rectify if Alex doesn't have some of the answers that you want. Yeah, if you could.
On the mic.
On the mic.
You demand, Alex.
First of all, it's not personally, we aren't being singled out. We appreciate your business at Deerwood. The reality is, when me and Bob sat down, when I took over, we talked about a lot of things. Some of the things that we talked about was the fact that we have a municipal public golf course that is essentially being privatized by the enormous amount of leagues we have playing. Essentially, if you're not in a league, it's very difficult to get on the course anytime after 4 o'clock, Monday through Thursday, because we're so saturated with league play. To me, we, and I discussed this in the workshop, we've got to attack it from two different angles. We could attack it strictly from the business aspect, and that's a good business model where we just blow it up with guaranteed league play. But as a municipal golf course, we have a responsibility to other golfers who don't play in leagues to open up playtime for them as well. And I believe when I discussed that with one of your members, they agreed that was a good idea, but you just didn't like the fact that it impacted your league, and I totally understand that. So when me and Bob sat down, to try and make this not so drawn up, because I know there's other things on the agenda, we could certainly talk after this, that's fine. We looked at seniority, we looked at tee times availability, and essentially, we looked at Monday through Thursday leagues, and out of the 29 leagues, we're asking 20 leagues to make adjustments. It's not just you guys, and we've asked three different leagues from three different nights, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, I believe, to offer them the same split reduced season time that we offered you. So if you're not being singled out, if that's what you think, I apologize for that, that miscommunication. You're not being singled out. It's not just you. Like I said, we're trying to do our best to condense all of our leagues into two. We have 27 holes of golf. We're trying to condense that into 18 holes and three up to nine holes golf course for people to walk on and make reservations. What that also does right now with a set of three leagues playing on all three courses is we're turning away people that want to golf 18 holes at 1 o'clock, because when they make the turn for their back nine, that's when the leagues start. So by trying to condense the leagues and do a couple of switches, which I think Bob did a great job of doing, and trying to concede and make some adjustments, we've allowed for the fact that we can have 12 extra tee times. We can turn, we don't have to turn those 12, there was 12 groups of, again, that's 12 groups of, usually it's a group of four, turning away them. We opened up 12 tee times at 1 o'clock for people who want to golf 18 holes, and they could still make it, because their back nine would be on that open course. We've also opened up a total of 22 tee times for the nine holes after 4 o'clock, which is six more tee times than we had before. So those are the things, these are the ways you want to make these adjustments. It's nothing personal, but again, it's, you have to, and I think it's my job, I think it's, I think it's fair to not just look at 40-some-odd leagues that play Monday through Friday, but to look at the thousands of golfers that either aren't golfing or are going elsewhere, because they already understand that Monday through Thursday, the chances of them even walking onto a Deerwood or making a reservation are something done. So they're taking their business elsewhere. So that's the idea behind it. I would gladly sit down with you ladies and show you our tee time schedule that Bob has printed out. We can show you what we're doing, what we planned. You can take a look at it. If you have suggestions, you want to take a look at that, and you see something that we don't see, we all here is to hear that. But you are the lowest seniority either. We have, there's another person, another group that's under less than you, they've only done their two years, and they've actually had their tee times cut in half. So that's really the only grouping that has, had that significant. And again, that's because they haven't done theirs long, so we did take seniority into account. And, you know, you can't make everyone happy, but I think it's our job, that taxpayers should have the ability to golf on a course and not just league play for that dominates the course. So that's the idea with that, and we understood going in, we've had a lot of discussion of living in knee-jerk reaction. And we understood there's probably going to be some backlash if people don't like changes, if people don't like to let it impact their league, and I totally understand that. But we have to also make those tough decisions to make it good for the home course. And as Bob said to you, that doesn't mean you can't play. There's still opportunities to make reservations. I understand that's a pain in the butt for 26 ladies. But like I said, you can sit down after the meeting's over, if you want to look at our course schedule, and we could try and figure something out, but that's kind of the rationale behind it.
Okay, and ladies, if you, at the end of the meeting, if you want to approach us, we'll give you our courage. If we need to sit and talk about this further, we can schedule a meeting. Thank you, Alex. Anybody else wishing to speak on tonight's agenda, and the agenda only tonight so far? Anybody else with anything to speak on with the agenda? State your name and address for the record, please.
For the record, 123 Miller Street. This is wonderful. Usually, there's students in the back. Today, there's adults. Concerned adults attending, coming to the meeting. I love it. I love it. I love it. I hope to see you guys more often. I'm here on the agenda item. I'm going to repeat myself. You know what's coming. Item one, Mayor, reappointment of Dale Rogers as the North Tonawanda City Market Clerk. What do I call this? Retreads. I know Dale has been how many years on this job?
Two.
We actually just discussed this. It's only been two years.
It seems, yeah, maybe six years or so.
Sonya, I want to say thank you for calling him a retread, because he was left off the agenda last time. And he came to me and he said, you know, I'm sorry I wasn't on the agenda, because I wasn't called a retread. So I'm going to tell him that you called him that, and he'll be thrilled.
He was in our engineering department for how many years?
Decades.
How many?
Decades.
Thirty. That's one of the items, elements of the retread. We need to get people in the community participating, new blood and new ideas. It's not being disrespectful, it's just to expressing my thoughts on the item, on the agenda. Also, permission to change, item 3, point 3, Clerk Treasurer, permission to change the half-year stall rental fee for the North Tonawanda City Market. My reading, the communication is from 300. It will jump, be jacked up, $225?
It's from 175 to 225. And that was brought about by the farmers in the market, thinking that the half-year vendors were, should have been charged more. This is coming from the farmers at the market. They request the change.
And I was going to ask you, if they were aware of what the change is? You know, I've known the farmers' market since I was a young person. This is one of the jewels, one of the attractions to our city, where other people, like Niagara Falls, are putting over on the radio, geez, I wish we had what North Tonawanda has. You see the people coming out? I love that we have it, but quite honestly, the last few years, it's gone down. And I know they were here, was it a year or two year ago? And I, they were right on what they were saying. We need to find more farmers coming, but I know supposedly, people in the farming business industry, it's dying out. But I'd love to see more farmers, because it's really a blessing to be able to get their produce, literally their produce. So I share that with you. Also, regarding community development, was that? What are you laughing about, Mr. Carrero? Am I missing something?
I'm smiling at Laura, because she's here for community development. I'm sorry, Laura, I singled you out.
We have a representative for all your topics.
They know my interest in community development. On this grant, is it just for one site, the Sweeney?
So this is Gateway Harbor Park Improvement, which includes the new bathroom facility.
Maybe you should tell the people who don't know about it.
All right, so the Gateway Harbor Park Improvements are going to include a new bathroom facility for the voters. The old one is torn down, and expanded dockage near dockside. So this, on the agenda item, is basically just a rubber stamp saying that it consists with the local waterfront revitalization program, the LWRP, which is a state-funded program adopted by the council in 2014. So this is just saying that our project is consistent with that, the golf course.
No other?
Thank you.
That grant is just for that Sweeney site, I think you said. The other, there is another item, 14, Huge Recreation in Parks, approval of fee increase. Increase in the fees. I want to ask Alex, Mr. Dama?
It's called Alex.
That's how I know you. You worked under Eddie Adams, right?
No, that was before my time.
I'm sorry?
That was before my time.
Before your time. Eddie Adams was, I think, in his early 80s working. Mark, help me out. Eddie Adams, how old was he when he retired?
I don't remember.
I understood, it was that common knowledge that he was the oldest employee here. The point is, with respect to comments he made to me regarding tennis courts, you have part of the funding being tennis courts playing. How many, what are the tennis courts that are used when you have tennis playing?
Our instructional clinics are done at Tabor Court.
Tabor Court?
Yes.
Only Tabor Court?
That string of eight courts, correct. And we use Wurlitzer Courts for our sports, summer sports programming.
You use other courts?
Yes, there's a Wurlitzer Sports Program in the summer, and there's a court on, in Wurlitzer that we use for the summer as well.
So it's pretty much just Tabor and Wurlitzer Court?
Let's sign her up, Alex.
That the focus is on?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Listen, since you're here, Alex, I would like to mention to you that we have the Carruthers Park Tennis Court. Eddie Adams said, that is the best tennis court in the whole city. I think there are six of them. And when I had complained to the city that there was an accident, they received a check. They had yet still to repair the damage done to it. I'm saying this to you, and I'm sure it's gotten back to you. That tennis court is truly the best, and I'd like to see it come back. In years past, I have said, put the nets up, put the nets up. They weren't putting the nets up. And they were also allowing weeds to grow around it, rather than maintaining it, like the others, like Wurlitzer Park and some of the other newer subdivisions. So I'm asking you, notifying you personally, eyeball to eyeball, that needs to be put back. They received a check. He told me, Sonya, the city has received the check. I've seen it. But they never did the repair to that tennis court, and it's like a professional tennis court. The others are nothing like it.
Thank you, Sonya.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sonya.
Thank you.
Sonya, if I could add, Dale Rogers has done a wonderful job as the market manager. He's bringing it up to modern code. He's gotten rid of the chopsky salespeople. It's the farmer's market. He's done wonders, and if anybody deserves to keep that job, it's him. So I've got a call for a retread, but he's doing, he's doing the job, and he's doing what we require of him to do.
Yeah, he's got a vision for that market, and he's going to keep on that vision. And he wants to revise a lot of the bylaws and parameters that were set way back when. He wants, and he's going to hold the farmers accountable for, I don't know if you missed the workshop, for X amount of produce percentage that has to be grown on a local farm. So I think that's important for our market. Anybody else wishing to speak on any agenda business that's on the agenda, and the agenda items only, please step forward. Seeing that there's none, we'll roll the minutes.
A approval of the minutes of the special session, December 11, 2018.
So moved.
Second, by Alderman Zanzilco, second by Alderman Pecoraro.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
I have proof of publication published, November 2, 2018. Legal notice, notice of foreclosure of tax liens, City Clerk Treasurer.
Make the motion.
By Alderman Tyloc.
I'm second.
Sign by Alderman Braun.
We have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call on this, please?
Alderman Tyloc.
Aye.
Pecoraro.
Aye.
Berube.
Aye.
Braun.
Aye.
Zanzilco.
Aye, motion carried.
Communications from city officials regarding mayor reappointment of Dale Rogers as a North Tonawanda City Market Clerk.
I'll make that motion.
By Alderman Pecoraro.
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Berube.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor for the reappointment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
I have from the City Clerk Treasurer regarding removal of 1,400 Westwood Drive from the appropriate interim pro procedure proceedings.
I'll make that motion, please. I'll make that motion, please.
By Oliver Zanzolka.
I'll second.
Second by Oliver Berube.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Uh, from the City Clerk Treasurer regarding permission to change North Tonawanda Co, City Code, Chapter thirty-three, dog licensing fees.
Um, Dan, can you just go over that real quick?
Uh, what, what the request is, is we are changing, um, for each spayed and neutered dog, it was seven dollars for licensing. It is being increased to ten dollars. And for each unspayed or unneutered dog, it is going from fifteen dollars to twenty dollars. And that's just to bring us in line with municipalities around us.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion to have permission to change that licensing fee. Anybody have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, can I have roll call on this, please?
Oliver Tylik.
Aye.
Peckerero.
Aye.
Berube.
Aye.
Braun.
Aye.
Zanzolka.
Aye, motion carries.
Uh, from the City Clerk Treasurer regarding permission to change the half-year stall rental fee for the North Tonawanda City Market. And that is going from, one second, from one hundred and seventy-five dollars to two hundred and twenty-five dollars for the half-year.
As discussed, I'll make that motion.
By Oliver Peckerero.
I'll second.
Second by Oliver Berube.
We have a motion and a second, can I have a roll call on this one as well?
Oliver Tylik.
Aye.
Peckerero.
Aye.
Berube.
Aye.
Braun.
Aye.
Zanzolka.
Aye, motion carries.
From the City Engineer regarding a word of contract for Project twenty eighteen dash ten wastewater treatment plant ferret chloride replacement.
I feel this is very of the utmost importance, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, can I have roll call, please?
Oliver Tylik.
Aye.
Peckerero.
Aye.
Berube.
Aye.
Braun.
Aye.
Zanzolka.
Aye, motion carries.
I have from the Engineer regarding a word of contract for engineering agreement services during construction for Project twenty eighteen dash ten wastewater treatment plant ferret chloride replacement.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, can I have a roll call on this as well?
Oliver Tylik.
Aye.
Peckerero.
Aye.
Berube.
Aye.
Braun.
Aye.
Zanzolka.
Aye, motion carries.
I have from the City Accountant regarding payment of the abstract of claims dated December eighteenth, two thousand eighteen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
By Oliver Braun.
I'll second.
Second by Oliver Berube.
On the question, um, I brought it up before. We are not being conscious of overspending in certain budget items. Regardless if certain departments have enough money. The way I look at it is, we budget something, say for vehicles, and we go over that. But then we take money out of, say, the salt budget, and then shift that to the vehicle budget. When we do that for a lot of different things, it's sort of a shrug, like, why do we have a budget then? And I, it doesn't necessarily fall on the council. And I think this is, to hold department heads responsible, it, it's the mayor's job, right? It's, it's his position to do this, and I'm going through the purchasing policy that we have. And it, it seems like we're not, we're not following it. We're, it's against our policy. You know, if someone wants to take money and, and, or buy something, and it's not, we don't have enough money in that account, there's a process to it that we're not following. So, if it's all of us having a discussion with the mayor, I, I think it, it's something we have to take serious. And I don't think we have, because from my understanding, this warrant, we had seven hundred and forty thousand dollars of over-budgeted items. And it doesn't mean that we, we don't have the money in the big pot of things, right? But again, we're moving money from one sector, salt, to maybe vehicles, to this, to that, and it, it just seems like it gets too complicated, and we really gotta get a, a grasp on where the money is.
You're gonna have to, you're gonna have to give me specifics, because you're just making a non-rush approach to everything, and we, we discussed this upstairs. Where, where is it that, where is it that you're finding these items that you're talking about?
So I asked the, the accounting department after we got our warrants, because it, you know, the end of the year, I'm sure there's, you know, oh, I, I overspent on here, I overspent on here, you know, and, um, it's, it's evident that it's, it happened last council meeting. It happened again even more so this one, and we have two other warrants that we're gonna have to approve.
We have a, we have a very disciplined accounting process that we abide by.
Oh, I don't know. I think we gotta take another look at.
See, you don't, you don't know.
No, no, I think I'm questioning what you're saying, Bob, is if you look at the purchasing policy, vouchers may be issued only after first determining that the unencumbered balances of budgetary appropriations are available to cover anticipated obligations.
Absolutely.
Right, so a department head does not have the authority to initiate any financial obligations unless sufficient appropriations are available in his or her budget at the time that the purchase is consummated. And then request a budgetary transfer of funds if required. So he would request, or she requests the amount to be transferred, and then purchase that. You can't just buy stuff and assume the city's gonna pay for it.
Right, but, but, but what I'm, what I'm noticing is, in what I found, and even last week, uh, I, I saw, uh, Mark Zellner to explain this. And he went right before he submitted the vouchers, which by the way, these are signed off and audited by our accountant, he's saying.
You gotta pay it.
Not just that we're gonna pay it, that there are funds available. If you look at each voucher, it'll tell you, A, if there's funds available, uh, or if there's not funds available. Now, in one particular instance last week that you brought up, uh, Mark Zellner checked with Amanda, and she said, yes, you can take money from this account, there's twenty-eight thousand dollars in there for salt. Now, turns out, we get the voucher, everything seems to check off except for the last piece that was circled in pink as a question. So Mark went back to her and said, uh, there's confusion, maybe a communication error, I was told to take it from this account. So she, he was advised by the accountant to go into that account, and the money wasn't there, so now they had to transfer. So he checked and did his due diligence to be sure. No, no, but I'm giving you the examples that you brought up, and that's one of them.
Seven hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Okay, but here's my question. Why are we only discussing this on the nights where you're finding these coming in at six-twenty and we're not getting a list of these?
We get these numbers hours in advance, that's the whole point. That, that's the point I'm trying to make, is there's not enough time to.
But what you found, but you, what you found, uh, you have ample opportunity to bring it to our attention so we can.
I don't think that's true. And I am bringing it to, to your attention, what's, what do you mean?
Well, you got it hours before that, you said you got it yesterday.
Bringing it to your attention, we're here as a group.
But nothing specifically.
Well, we have, uh, general fund, there's city clerk, there's personal services, background checks in there with engineering operations, public works, administration, I mean, these are all things that are over, they add up. I mean, that's, all I'm saying is like, it's, I don't wanna put all the responsibility on the council in this matter, but the mayor needs to.
Sure.
Enforce the policies that we have in place, and he has not done that from what I see.
Yeah.
So, and that comes back on us.
Unfortunately, the mayor's not here to defend himself.
Exactly, and that's disappointing, I didn't know that, right? And no one told me he wasn't gonna be here ahead, ahead of time, so.
This sounds like it's an accountant to, to the mayor, is the mayor is the executor of the city business.
But we signed off on these numbers too.
That's right, absolutely.
Because we basically have to.
Well, we signed off because the accountant audited it and said that there were funds available. Anything over a thousand dollars, she reviews and she signs off. Now, if you can show me a voucher where she signs off, as we do not have those funds.
But we don't, I mean, in theory, we don't in certain line items, right? So the, the point I'm trying to make is like, why make a budget if we're gonna go over eleven thousand dollars in the one line item? You know, another eleven, nine thousand, thirteen thousand, you know, I mean, some of these have other explanations, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars over in the other.
I'd like, I'd like that discussion to also include the accountant.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great, but, but I'm saying is like, a lot of this responsibility lies on the mayor, and we're the ones signing off on it here, so. There needs to be more discussion about this, and we have to.
And, and we said there, and we said there would be.
Okay.
So, but the bottom line is, if we don't vote where we're recommended, where the funds are available, we're not being responsible municipality, paying our bills, paying them on time, we're gonna accrue late charges, and I don't see that as being responsible.
And it's not responsible for tax dollars to do what we're doing, that's what I'm saying.
Well, we'll come up with a solution. So on this here, on the abstracts of claims, do I have a motion to accept this?
We already did.
And do I have a roll call, 'cause I didn't hear that?
Oliver Tylik.
Aye.
Peckerero.
Aye.
Berube.
Aye.
Braun.
Aye.
Zanzolka.
Aye, so those will be paid, thank you.
From the Accountant regarding permission to make any necessary budgetary transfers or amendments for sanctioned expenditures, current liabilities, accounts payable, and enclosures for the fiscal year ending December two thousand eighteen.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
By Oliver Peckerero, second by Oliver Zanzolka.
We have a motion and a second, and I'd like roll call on this as well.
Oliver Tylik.
Aye.
Peckerero.
Aye.
Berube.
Aye.
Braun.
Aye.
Zanzolka.
Aye, motion carried.
Uh, from Youth Recreation and Parks regarding approval of the fee increase for the two thousand nineteen programs and facilities offered by their department.
I'll make that motion.
By Oliver Braun.
I'll second it.
Second by Oliver Zanzolka.
We have a motion and a second, uh, can I have a roll call on this fee increase, please?
Oliver Tylik.
Aye.
Peckerero.
Aye.
Berube.
Aye.
Braun.
Aye.
Zanzolka.
Aye, motion carried.
I have monthly reports, City Clerk Treasurer, Police Department.
I'll make a motion, receive and file.
I'll second.
Oliver Zanzolka, second by Oliver Tylik.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
I have from Community Development regarding Gateway Harbor Park Improvements Project Local Waterfront Revitalization Program Consistency Review.
So moved.
I'll second.
By Oliver Peckerero, second by Oliver Braun.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Uh, the items under Communication from Others from Rescue Fire Company Number Five, that was pulled because uh, they're requesting an exemption petition of five years. When doing research, this gentleman should've been, we're thinking fifteen years. So that's why we pulled it, because we need clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for the agenda. At this point, if, uh, we have anyone that wants to speak on any city business for the good of the city, please step forward. State your name and address for the record.
Um, I'm Susan Wilken, I reside at three-two-nine Miller Street. And I'm just gonna keep reminding you good people that you can't develop that wetland and Brentwood and Sweeney Streets. Um, does anybody know who this person is? She's been in the news?
Yep.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Okay, she's the youngest person in the House of Representatives. Ms. Cortez, um, is proposing something called a Green New Deal. And what happened on Capitol Hill, there were about a thousand, over a thousand high school students went up to Capitol Hill, and they harangued, or they told the elder statespeople there that they have to have a change, better for the environment. Else by the year twenty-thirty, there's gonna be a climatic catastrophe. Now, these kids, when they hit their thirties, some of us here might be dead by now. Maybe I will be dead, maybe Sonya will be dead as well. But what will happen is.
Oh, no. Sorry, Sonya.
I hope not, I, the thing of it is, you're, you're, what you're doing, you're doing it by increments in a small city like ours, by draining the wetlands, and I told you, the wetlands are a carbon sink. And I don't know when you gentlemen and lady had ever taken a biology class, when you learned about the carbon cycle. And the carbon, uh, wetlands are carbon sinks. They sequester the carbon in their waters and decayed material, and also the trees in the wetland do photosynthesis. They take the carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere and they produce oxygen. The more of these trees and these green spaces you take down, the more problems they're gonna have. But you're gonna have to be reminded that, I hope to God, none of you is taking what you call a kickback from a gentleman developer who wants to build there, because it's gonna destroy the environment, and we're gonna also have to have an economic problem having to finance a storm sewer system. But the thing of it is, it's not gonna be fair, if you have children or grandkids, to wake up one day, and they wake up one day, and like those nice kids that were here earlier, they're gonna wake up in their twenties and find out this planet is greatly compromised. We already have climate change, we already have people, refugees running, you know, fleeing from their homelands, and a lot of it is from climate change. So, um, come on, we start here on a local level by not developing anymore. We gotta create there of our green spaces, else you're gonna have a problem, big problem. And they're not gonna thank you for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on?
And there's gonna be a demonstration at National Puget next month.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on any city business for the good of the city, please step forward.
Kathy Kern, twelve forty-eight Greenbrier. Oh, about a year ago or so, I talked about the Twin City Highway, uh, with the fact that it really irked me when I saw signs by the yield sign telling you what to do. Well, I saw the improvements that were done with the, um, lighted stop signs. Unfortunately, I was the unfortunate victim coming off, and I always say I'm coming off at the Budway exit, that a pick-up truck decided not to stop for the stop sign. Thank God my car has the audible alarm that somebody was in my, on the right side too close, and, and the bells were ringing. So I had to hit the brakes, and this truck just kept right on going. So, I'm thinking of now what? We've got the stop signs on two places on Division, which are good. However, people for some reason are seeing these flashing stop signs and not stopping. So I've been thinking, now what could we do with the Twin Cities Highway? I spend a lot of time with my friends' house in Snyder, I do a lot of driving on Harlem. Yes, I do the two roundabouts. And I know the Twin Cities Highway is state, you don't have the authority to make changes. However, has there been any thought or, um, any kind of looksee to do at Weedfield and at Robinson to do two roundabouts? I don't know what else we can do. I, I see how good it works on Harlem, which has a, a lot more traffic than the Twin Cities does. I see how well it works, I travel it a lot. And I was wondering, has there been a study, or has anybody given it some thought?
Sue, sorry, Kathy.
Kathy.
Um, Sue was. Hi Kathy, how are you?
Okay.
Good. Um, our city engineer, actually I saw it a few times, he, his department drew up a plan for it, and there's roundabouts actually at every intersection from like DeGrave to, um, is that Weedfield, right? And they're all singular ones, I believe there's no doubles there, it, it's not necessary, but we don't have twenty million dollars, is what it comes down to, right?
They would, the state would charge the city for the improvement?
So, I mean, but, we have to work with the state, right? And, you know, they have to disburse money amongst all the municipalities in New York State, and, um, I think it's just a really long process that it's great that you, you care about something like this, and I think it's, you're someone that we could rely on to sort of help move it forward. Um, so I'm glad you're bringing the discussion up.
It's just that I, I don't know what else to do with this. I realize that there's a lot of accidents on the Twin Cities, I've seen enough of them, and I really thought that the stop signs would help. After this truck almost, you know, wiped me out, I'm saying, oh, Band-Aid fix. But I don't know what else, I'm not an expert in transportation, I have called and spoken with the DOT on several issues on the Twin Cities.
Chelsea is here from the Engineering Department, if Chelsea wants to say anything about it.
There is interest in doing something there, uh, we've talked, we've talked to GBNRTC, which is the Greater Buffalo Niagara Transportation Council. They wanna do something in Niagara County similar to, you know, what they're planning to do with like Disco Jepita. But it's a long process. You have the DOT on board, the city would have to be on board, there's, you know, it would be taking both right of ways within, you know, the DOTs right away as well as the city, so there'd be a lot of coordination. It has been discussed, I mean, it's there, but it's a ways away from where anything can actually.
Well, I just thought I'd bring up my concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi Glenn.
Austin.
How are ya?
Great, great, how you doing?
Good, how are you? I, I think that overall you guys have a...
Glenn, I need an address.
I'm sorry, my name is, uh, Glenn, a totally unwelcome resident here, forty plus years, thirty-four Lincoln Avenue.
Glenn, you're an address. What is it?
Thirty-four Lincoln Avenue.
Thank you.
Right behind Joe Barry, alright, so, uh, you know, we get to see a lot what goes on around here and, uh, and, uh, we've been working on a few projects ourself with, uh, with an organization that we're working on for, uh, our veteran community. But, uh, one of the things I wanted to, uh, approach first of all is sort of the discussion earlier about the, the way, uh, the monies are being handled. Now, I know as a resident and as well as, uh, as somebody who's worked with, uh, board of directors that it is important to follow those ru- rules, so on behalf of, uh, Austin's statement earlier, I think it needs to be addressed. On the other part, with the development, um, I love what Sue had to say about, uh, development and, uh, the Zimmerman, you spoke of, right?
Sweeney.
Oh, Sweeney.
Sweeney.
Right, or there's, well, you, you mentioned something before about the wetlands, okay?
And there's the wetlands there.
Okay, there's wetlands there too, okay, because, uh, we had, uh, we've been actually working on a project recently, um, the proposal we put together, um, in a few months' time, so we'll probably be back here talking about it again, but, uh, I'd like, I, I agree with her wholeheartedly that these, uh, wetlands need not be disturbed, so there are other ways, you're talking about, uh, the farmer's market having some issues with the farmers, I think some ideas for agriculture can be brought to the table, uh, it's something that we can discuss, uh, uh, in our, uh, future endeavors with, um, the establishment for, uh, Greenway and Zimmerman, maybe actually a few other areas that, uh, we can assist with in our local, uh, veteran community as well as, uh, first responders and law enforcement, and, uh, but I'll, I'll leave that one, I'll leave on that note, because, uh, my wife could actually put together some ideas for, to help the city out. But as far as anything else goes, uh, you know, maybe, um, I forgot what I was going to say about, uh, so this is my first time I've been coming up here, so...
No problem.
Um, I think that was about it, what's that?
I was trying to help you think of it, do you want a candy cane one?
Oh, no, no, thanks, I appreciate that.
I have a bunch, so anyone feel free to just approach.
But, uh, you know, with, with the, I forgot what I was going to say, I just totally lost it.
You got a minute or so, go ahead if you can think of it.
Um, I think it was more along the lines of the development in North Taiwan and some of the budgets that were brought up in the past, um, and they stated that they were, there was, um, you know, some opportunity for locals to actually attend those meetings that we weren't made aware of, and there's multiple people that I can attest, that can attest to that same complaint, that they said that, uh, we went, by the time we had actually got to these, uh, different projects that were being developed for that two point five million that North Taiwan had received, for the development, and we were not made aware of any such meeting, um, and it was twenty-six people total.
We had numerous, numerous meetings.
Numerous.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, you're still, this is what, this is what I'm talking about, but you also had how many people at each one of those meetings, and how many people are in North Taiwan?
Laura, Laura, would you like to?
We had ample public engagement for that project, it was kind of overkill for us, but it was good, you know, it was tons of it, we had, um, community conversations at the farmer's market, um, I think in the fall, we had, how many public meetings?
We had walk-throughs.
We did about a dozen.
Yeah, we had walk-throughs.
This is, this is what, this is what you guys are saying, but I, at the same time, when we had discussed this before, you had made mention the amount of people, and if you calculate how many people live here in North Taiwan, and apparently the publicity given wasn't enough.
Well, we had multiple.
They were very well attended, we even had boards set up here in City Hall for people just to walk in and, you know...
They could actually put stickers to prioritize where they thought that those projects should be allotted.
What, what are, what are some of your recommendations for us to move forward in getting the word out? If you're saying we didn't do the job that you think we needed to do, what is the solution?
I don't know, anybody else have any suggestions?
We should smile.
Yeah, there you go.
Have a council.
Well, we're ready to do it already.
Yeah.
There, there's an idea right there for it.
I mean, I, I'm not really the person for the solution to that, you guys are the ones I think should be well in tune and aware of how to, how to make that happen, but when you come to me and you tell me personally that you had twenty-six people attend your, your meetings that you put all this advertisement out for,
That's good.
That tells, that's, that's not good, how many people are in this, in, in North Taiwan, Kathy, how many people in general?
Thirty-four thousand.
How many? Thirty thousand people, twenty-six attended, that's good, okay, well, that's all I got to say about that.
It's only one way.
I, I just want to say that I feel that Lumber City Development, Laura, Mike, had done an excellent job advertising the, those engagements, and, and it's not up to me or the council to go door to door to grab everybody in the community to come to these... You, people have to educate themselves on what is happening in their community.
You're right, but maybe the community isn't doing something to make that more aware than they're saying they are, you know, because, I mean, I've been, I've been trying my best to figure out how, you know, what's going on around the community, and the information that I received are suit through different, uh, internet connections, through the paper, from, uh, you know, the, the Niagara Gazette, and I don't see a lot of this stuff, it's not highlighted, it's not highlighted enough for development here in NT.
I feel that, I feel that the Niagara Gazette has done ample...
Exactly, yeah, the thing is is that...
Coverage on these community events, and I think that, um, we have the Niagara reporter person that just left here, but he's done it, we've had the Tribune here, he's done it, so it, 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 we, we have the responsibility to tell you what's going on in the community, but the community also has to have responsibility of reaching out and seeing what's happening in the community.
Right, so I, I share your frustration with that, I think a lot of us do, right, is we wish more community members were involved, we couldn't fit thirty-one thousand people in this room, but, but, you know, in my line of work, I do a lot of community outreach, and we engage people, similar things that Lauren or Gang does over there, um, and the last one I was at, we had no single resident that wasn't a school board member, a council member, you know, people that are already active, there was not a single resident, and it posted everywhere, I mean, it was in Erie County, and it's a little frustrating when you get there, and, you know, you got to think of it the other way, it's like, um, you know, we're very involved in many different things, and so are people like Laura, so we have a good grasp on what's going on in all these other pieces, so you can rely on us somewhat to sort of say, well, this is what the people want, because someone like you, who I run into over the weekend, you give me your thoughts, and then I say to the project manager, well, my friend Glenn over here said we should do this, you know, so it's like, we try and relay information, but again, it is very frustrating and difficult to get people out, out of their house sometimes and engage.
I mean, it's not to say that you guys aren't doing your jobs, you know, but the thing is, is I think, um, you know, when it comes to these bigger projects, I think the awareness needs to be a little better than what it has been in the past, I've been, maybe I'm wrong, maybe, you know, completely wrong, and what I've looked for, I haven't found because of that, but...
Laura, if you follow our Facebook page, every meeting is always posted on there.
Okay, well, what's your Facebook page?
Lumber City Developing Corporation.
You know, because I, I dealt with Lumber City a while back, and they, they made a supposed connection for us to help, uh, develop, uh, a retreat center in the past, me as well aware of, and, uh, Lumber City connected with somebody that fell through completely, like, they made all these promises, nothing went through. We spoke with Lou Braun about a, a, a building over on, uh, that is, that, that his father owned, that, uh, we could work on, and nothing came through on that, we tried to keep content, I'm sure he's a businessman, but, uh, none of that was ever followed through, so when is this stuff going to be followed through? When is North Taiwan going to stop and say, look, if we're going to do something, we have multiple people that are willing to get up and actually do something, but we need our officials to do something as well, to step up and say, okay, let's take action and move forward with these plans. So, aside from that, you know, thanks for letting me come up to the stand, I guess I almost, almost forgot some of the things I wanted to say, thanks, guys, thank you.
Carl Bauer, how are you?
Carl Bauer, ten sixty-six East Robinson Street.
Um, you guys need to do a better job.
Thank you.
In all, in all seriousness, um, to the previous speaker's point about participation, uh, I will repeat a cliche that I'm sure many and most of us already know, you supposedly have a hundred citizens, you have a hundred people, we have eighty of them who are good at doing nothing. We have eighty of them that are available for participation, and of those, you probably have one, if you're lucky, who's actually a participant, or somebody who is involved, okay? And I don't mean to get in a debate, debate with the previous speaker, I believe I have shown that I'm a concerned and interesting citizen, and I would, the fact that nobody even took a shot at me, Bob, uh, would not be, I would not be...
I need to see you after the meeting, on a serious matter.
I know we do, we have to talk about, up tomorrow, right?
Yes.
Um, I would not be hypocritical on my part, um, I wanted to address something and I would like to offer a proposal or ask a question, I know I've asked about that before, you guys said you don't like it, the clock.
Oh, I love it.
You love it.
I don't care.
Um, with, okay, I think what happens, and, and again, I don't mean to be critical of any of the previous speakers, but we tend to lose track, okay? What happens is that this, this microphone, this, this podium gets monopolized, okay? Um, with the council's permission, I'd like to, and I've attended a number of workshops, by the way, there aren't any for a couple of weeks, I would assume because of Christmas.
No, there is one.
Day after Christmas, we're having a workshop.
Twenty-second, one said the twenty-sixth.
Well, I will be there, what I would like to do is submit a proposal, protocol, whatever you call it, for timing on the microphone and the speaker and use of the clock. Um, I've had some experience in protocol, Robert's Rules, and different things to that effect, um, it would encompass something where there is a time limit, but if there is a rebuttal or a response from somebody on the council, it gets extended thirty or sixty seconds, whatever.
Yeah, Dan does that pretty well.
Make pardon.
There's nothing, there's no law.
Carl, I currently do do that, I keep the time on my phone.
Okay, so you keep the time.
And then he pauses it.
Okay, so you do pause it, okay, that's cool, but I'm wondering how many people are actually aware of it, and the, and the reason I offer this and suggest it is it would, I think, hopefully, and this is in agreement with some of the previous speakers, make a difference on who we get to participate and come up here and, and share their opinions as well as communicate, you know, to the members on the council, as well as department heads, et cetera. So, just, just a thought, trying to make things run more smoothly.
We are out there, and, and if you can't meet us at a meeting, you can contact us, you can, we were always open to your ideas, your emails, whatever you guys want to suggest, pitch, we've had several of you in at workshops to hear what you have to say, because we do care. And, you know, to make a point about what Laura was saying, you know, there's several ways, uh, and they know as community development in LCDC how to approach the community, how to have meetings, gatherings, Sonia's been at some of the gatherings, uh, when it comes to the idea phase of what we want to see with NT Momentum with Oliver Street, and then there's walk-throughs to have as many people who want to attend, uh, go through, and they, they were there, right, Laura, walking through, telling us what they thought they'd like to see on Oliver Street. And we are also limited with the NT Momentum funds, and the fact that we can't just go willy-nilly and spend money, uh, elsewhere, we need to look at the projects we submitted, that the state thought were good ideas, and stick with that type of program, but we were trying to prioritize, and we had many people, I was at the, uh, farmer's market, and I saw lines of people, and they were given stickers, and they were told, what would you like to see in these several five proposed areas, and how do you, how do you rank them? And a lot of people were asking questions, and that was good, and so I was seeing community, uh, outreach, I was seeing community feedback, and it doesn't need to just be at those venues, this is what your elected officials are for, uh, but that's just two or three, uh, occasions where we have reached out to the public, and besides the Gazette, besides the other papers, to say, what do you, what would you like to see here, what projects are better than others, and, you know, literally, we're a phone call away, and, and we're a meeting away. And we're, we're a podcast away, you know.
And I didn't mean any of this critically, you know?
No, but I'm just...
I'm just trying to offer, I'm trying to offer a suggestion to, you know, increase the input, I'm, I'm big, I'm big on participation, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Absolutely. I, I am too, I, I encourage ideas.
Yes, I am, okay, whatever.
Some of our best solutions come from the residents, so that's why...
I'm sure relative to the previous gentleman's conversation, we have some talent pools that we, we probably haven't penetrated, because we don't know about them.
Right.
You know, so, just, just my thoughts, trying to make life better.
No, I'm glad. I, I like it.
Make your job easier too, I like that too.
We appreciate that.
Whatever.
Thank you so much. Anybody else will, willing to, or want to come up and speak on any city business, uh, for the good of the city, please step forward.
Good evening, my name is Sonia Dusa, and I reside at one twenty-three Miller Street. I had, uh, during the first portion, I wanted to mention, uh, a few comments, the first speaker, he was bringing up the golf course in, uh, a sinkhole, and in past years, like, decades, over the, over the decades, it's been brought up about the golf course. And I heard it again today, and I was glad that the first speaker brought it up, because, uh, I'm interested in what's happening in our city, I would like to see, Alex, uh, today, the, the word is transparency. We want information out, and, uh, a way to start is to, in all your different departments, put out the budget, uh, make it available, some years back.
Sonia, it, it is online, the budget, for the past year.
But it's, it's not, it's not the each budget in revenues, whatever.
Yeah, it's a little tough, I, I know what you're saying, and you, you sort of have to ask like a man to go...
So, let's do it, let's do it, because you know what, uh, another thing is, these women, I'm so thankful that they came out, because they were saying something I didn't know about, and I can appreciate how they feel, when I was sixteen, I was learning to play golf at the YMCA, and have done some golfing in the past, they're making a valid point, and then I hear Alex, and he's, uh, explaining to us what the situation is, we need to address what their concerns are, what he's having to deal with, and actually, everybody sit down, and let's understand what the municipality has. Transparency, it was mentioned, well, you weren't, the ladies were not, uh, at the, uh, you guys were, weren't at the workshop, and I thought, hey, Mr. Quinn, city clerk, you always do a micro mini audio, and I've asked you several times, when you have those workshops, put it on the computer, so people can hear, so they would get some information of what you were discussing.
Sonia, the last two... The last two workshops are on the computer, they are on the website.
The workshop, the audio?
Yes.
Bravo.
Yes, they are.
Gold star for you, that's really wonderful.
Thank you, Sonia.
Sincerely.
Uh, we...
Gold star.
We're promising a gold star.
I'll tell you. It's all the more made of them coming here and listening to the speaker.
I could do it right now, I'll just, you know...
Really, this, this is good news, this is progress.
It only took a few years, right?
Uh, also, so, thank you, ladies, and taking into consideration what the first speaker was talking about, and you know what, I was listening to, uh, Austin, and he reminded me, one of the other things on the agenda I wanted to ask about, it is about the, uh, seven point three accountant permission to make any budgetary transfers or amendments for sanctioned expenditures, accrued liability, accounts payable, and encumbrances for fiscal year ending December twenty eighteen, I thought, whoa, I know there's one or two lawsuits, does this have anything to do with a potential lawsuit payment we will be giving the petitioner against North Taiwan?
Nope.
That's a direct question.
No.
It doesn't.
Absolutely not.
Okay, is, can you tell me what it might be, or what it is?
From, from my understanding, it basically allows, if I, I'm correct, um, our accountant to move money as she needs to, to balance the, the budget, sort of like move that ten thousand from the, to one account to another, yeah, so...
Peter, from, from, take from Peter Ray Paul, what I'm... You were making a very valid point, you know, that's not good budgeting and long-term planning.
Amazing.
Another thing is, very important, I've said this several times, especially when there's been public hearing, you know, sometimes people can't hear like myself, believe me, I'm working on the ear problem, uh, a portable, I would, it's so necessary, so critical, that we have information, so when people, like, some, somebody stood up, uh, the engineer, if she had a portable microphone, when I was in Williamsville, when they had a site plan review, having people give input... when they had a site plan review, having people give input, it passed around, when somebody would speak, that little portable microphone went so you could hear. That's not expensive, I mean, that's not going to set us back, I don't know, hundred, two hundred dollars at the most. So that's a request of mine. Also, I read in the paper about the, I caught the Niagara Gazette article about ethics. I was floored. I thought, here we go. Back in the, what, nineteen thirties, North Tonawanda. I brought up the ethics code some years ago. Sandell, Bob Sandell was our assistant attorney. He made one word change to it and I thought, oh, this is a joke. If you look through our codes, they're like horse and buggy, chickens and what have you. It's over, we're in the nineteen twenties, thirties. We are not being, we have not, over the decades, been progressive in keeping up on things. So, let's, let's get progressive and, uh, we used to have a commission that was the Commission for Ethics. A cable commission, various commissions, and over the years, at the first session, I've said, after they had their first meeting, the reorganization, the various committees, it was printed in the paper, the papers, Tonawanda News, what have you, what various commissions we have, who was appointed to it. I've asked for this in years past. We should have that again. Obviously, we do not have an ethics commission in North Tonawanda, am I correct?
Right.
That's wrong.
At the county level.
I mean, that's your basic cash register on your phone when you've got a business. That's so basic, so I'm calling for that. And lastly, Sue Wilkie's comments were very important, very critical. Just this afternoon, because I was in Auburn a few, a couple of years ago, I was surprised. We think DeGraff Memorial Neighborhood is something. They make our McMansions look like cottages. They have, they truly preserve historic preservation, what they have there. We, in North Tonawanda, demolish it. We haven't done that. Now, we've been doing it for almost twenty years now, but late. We do not value our environment. So this afternoon, I was reading the Finger Lakes, I picked it up. I was amazed. They are conservationists, what they have in the Finger Lakes, I see why people visit there, that's something beautiful. And you know what, they want to protect it. They conserve it, they're thinking of the environment, just exactly what she was saying. I'm going to bring it in this week, I promise, I'll bring it in, you'll be happy with it.
Thank you, Sonia.
Then there was another one, the Adirondacks, the same thing.
Your time is up, thank you so much.
We do not have a respect for our environment in this area and we need to have it. Her points were very well taken. Thank you, thank you once again.
Owen, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on any city business? Please step up for the microphone and state your name and address. Anyone? Seeing that there's none, uh, we'll move on to closing, closing statements. Let's start with Alderman, Austin Tyler.
Hello, everyone, Merry Christmas, because I'll probably forget at the end. Um, it's great to see a crowd, even though half of them are women golfers, very upset. Yeah, right in the back. And, um, I understand, you know, there's a lot of discussion about the golf course and it seems like we need to find ways to make money off of it, right? Private golf courses make money, there's no reason why a public golf course shouldn't be making money and we should be in the green, not the red. And Alex, you're, you're doing a lot, I know that. Um, and we'll help where we can, so that's the whole thing, it's team effort, but-
You should have said, "I'm the green."
I'm the green, a pun, above a pun, so, but, but the-
Gold star.
I am, gold star. I am in favor, in whatever way, capacity, Alex, of trying to accommodate their needs. You know, I don't want to make it a man-woman thing and they're the only woman league and all that, but, you know, diversity is always great. I don't know, it sounds like they aren't the newest, um, league out of all of them, but, but it sounds like they're working people too. And as someone who works, you know, all day long and so on, I find it difficult to go to the doctor, I find it difficult to go to the dentist, right? Like, all these things. And I think one solution might be, can we approach those twenty, thirty-year league people and say, "Hey, there's a few women golfers who work all the time and they want an accommodating time, would you guys mind coming maybe in the afternoon?" Right? And it's also my understanding, there'll be a Friday, Saturday, Sunday for open golf. And, and half of them are the public, they are the residents, you know? I, hopefully this sort of resonates throughout the community and we hear complaints about not getting tee time, the walk-ons. But I received ten different emails from people within their group and outsiders. So, um, to me, the residents spoke and that's the majority of residents that seem to complain about something and so I'm relatively in their favor. That's, that's at least my position. But again, it's not my, well, no. I mean, you know, and Bob, and Bob showed support too as well and that was stated in a few emails, but it isn't-
There's not a lot of talk yet.
There's not a lot of talk, yes. So, but, but, um, Alex and the mayor ultimately will have a decision, you know? That's their department and so on, and I hope everyone can just work together on that. So hopefully we can find a common ground. Um, on the other note about the ethics committee, I'm always talking about the ethics committee and I found it interesting that, um, my father, when he was a legislator, he decided to just tell me this the other day, is in nineteen ninety-three, when he was, um, on their committee, the board, he was actually part of establishing the county ethics board, which is kind of funny. Now I want to do it and I'm not really receiving that kind of support locally. But he said it was never talked about that it would help municipalities individually, that the idea was really county, which we follow in the county, but not that the city would use the county ethics board for whatever reasons. Which I found interesting because he was on the board and he established it with other individuals, so I, I, it seems like there's a gray line there and, or say, but, um-
Actually, it's a, it's a law, that's what the general municipal law says. So it's not, it's not a gray area, that's what the law says.
Right.
So, maybe your dad-
The people who established it-
Your dad could read the law and that it wouldn't be so gray.
It sounds like they made it, but anyways, um, so, so I do support the ethics committee, obviously. I think it's a great idea, it's just to check some balances. Um, but regardless, we move on. On a positive note, uh, the, there's an ice rink that our department had, uh, also has been organizing with the DPW Parks Department. The, it, it is not exactly ready yet. We've had a couple of kids try and use it and sort of cut some of the tarp there. It's just not cold enough. I know we're actually wishing for colder weather, which is interesting, it's not usually a common thing. So, please wait, don't go on that just yet, um, there'll be a public announcement about it, but I just want to-
There's probably a sign posted.
Right, and there's signs, but maybe some doesn't want to read those, right? And so, but, great job, I just want to commend the departments on that. And, um, I think that's about it. So, thank you everyone for coming, have a great Christmas. I have candy canes too and I got to get rid of them, so feel free to come up.
All right.
Approachable.
Um, let's go to Alderman, Rob McRobey next.
Um, I just want to reiterate with the coloring contest. I had a lot of fun going over all of the entries and stuff and as you saw earlier, the kids were totally amazed, especially when we, when I called them last night to let them know they, they wanted stuff. And it was just a nice Christmas gift to them and I really appreciated that. And I don't want to tie you up with a lot of other things, so I'll end it at that.
Okay, Mark. Alderman, Bob McRobey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies, I'm very supportive of you also, and I'm allowed to say that now. Although the way the, the way the, the way the process works is that the mayor's got the day-to-day business and he and Alex will sit down, but I'm, I'm all for, for what you're proposing and I'm an advocate for you, so with that. The second thing is that we have a hub for services, I don't know if anybody's aware of that. Uh, but tomorrow morning, from ten o'clock to one-thirty in the afternoon, we're having a HEEP outreach, which is the Energy Assistance Program. But also, we have twenty-five service providers at Redeemer Lutheran Church with all sorts of services, whether they're legal, medical, or other support agencies out there. They're there for you. If you have an issue that you need a service for, we will take your service and get you the services you require. Uh, about six months ago, we had somebody that wanted some mental health assistance and we gave that to them. We didn't have a mental health counselor on staff, but we are there for the residents, we are there for you. Uh, this is a quarterly event and this one is a, a big one for weatherization. So we have Ivy League Construction and a few other organizations. But also, every resident that attends will get a free weatherization kit if you go. And there, it's going to be really valuable for you. And you'll see what's going on in North Tonawanda too by attending. With that, I'd like to, uh, finish up with a, a Christmas story. About fifty years ago, some of us can remember fifty years ago, about this time, uh, can anybody remember fifty years ago, uh, what was taking place was Apollo Eight?
Yeah.
The first mission that left Earth's orbit. And, uh, before the astronauts took off, NASA said, "Oh, by the way, you're going to do a Christmas Eve broadcast." And they said, "Well, what guidance are you going to give me?" And they said, "As long as it's appropriate." So NASA didn't ask anything more than that. The astronauts figured it out for themselves, what is appropriate. And they really struggled with it for a few months on what it is they were going to talk about. They, they said, "Hey, we could do Red off the Rednose Reindeer," or "We could do the, you know, the Nativity Story." And Frank Borman, who was the mission commander, said, "You know, this is getting broadcast to the world. So it's got to be representative of who we are as a nation and, and to the entire world for that." So with that, I'd like to give you a couple of excerpts out of the book Genesis. And this is what their discussion was on December twenty-fourth on Apollo Eight, as it's coming back around. Um, and this is, uh, started out by Bill Anders, uh, who was one of the, was the Air Force representative on the mission. And he said, "In the beginning, God created the heaven and earth and the earth was without form and void and darkness was on the face of the deep. And the spirit of God moved upon the face of the waters and God said, 'Let there be light,' and there was light." And then they continued on, Lovell, Lovell then said, "And God said, 'Let there be a filament in the midst of waters and let it divide the waters from the waters.' And God made the firmament and divided the waters, which were under the filament, from the waters which were above the filament." And that's, of course, from the book of Genesis, from the very beginning. And Borman concluded, "And he called, and God called the dry land earth and the gathering together of the waters he called seas, and God saw that it was good." We close with good night, good luck, Merry Christmas, and God bless all of you, all of you on the good earth. So that's my Christmas story to you. Remember the great things that America is all about and about Apollo Eight and the space mission. The first mission that actually orbited, went into moon's orbit with a single engine and we had faith that it was going to come around and come back around again. And, uh, it was a great that they brought up the first book of the Bible as the creation of the earth when they were looking back on it from the moon. So Merry Christmas, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Alderwoman, Donna Braun.
Uh, thank you everyone for coming. Um, I too, um, would like to, um, I appreciate all the ladies coming tonight and I empathize with you as working women, I am too. And it is hard to fit in a schedule what you would like to do. And I really hope that the mayor, Alex, and us can get together and, um, hopefully we can come to an agreement and accommodate you. Um, because it is tough, it is tough as a working woman to go out there and work all day and then want to do something for your enjoyment and fit it into your schedule. So I applaud you for coming. And, uh, thank you, Bob, for the Christmas story. Um, I'm going to just thank all the Christmas things that are going on in the city. Our Christmas coloring contest was wonderful. Um, and our lighting contest also, but we also have, this is our last weekend, um, for the wonderful Xmas trailer. If you have not seen it, go around on every Saturday throughout the month of December. It is, um, it's such a wonderful, wonderful thing that the, um, Ferocious family has done and it's grown, um, every year. And they give back to the, um, food pantry and they're looking to top off at fifteen thousand items this weekend. So they start out at Ohio School at five o'clock. And it just brings, uh, uh, this past Saturday, I was there at a, a house party and they came down the street and we were there with the food for the food pantry and it, it's just about the Christmas cheer that has been spread through this community by that trailer and I applaud them, they have done just a wonderful job. Um, so with that, I wish everybody Merry Christmas and I hope to see you again at another workshop. Maybe with you guys being working women, it might have to be like a workshop at night if we all want to get together. Thank you.
Uh, City Attorney, Luke Brown.
I don't mean anything with that.
Fun, have you been Merry Christmas?
Have no Merry Christmas?
I, I do highlight Carol's idea about the clock though. I'd like to talk, I'd like to hear more about the clock.
I like it. City Clerk Treasurer, Dan Quinn.
Uh, first off, I'd like to thank the residents that donated, uh, food, perishable items, not perishable items to my office. I was able to take to the food pantry two turkeys and two boxes of food. So, I would like to thank those residents. Uh, secondly, just a little housekeeping. Uh, just for those who want to know, City Hall will be open on a half a day on the twenty-fourth, so eight-thirty to twelve. Will close on Christmas Day. We will also be open a half a day on the thirty-first, eight-thirty to twelve. Will be closed on New Year's Day. And we are having a workshop on the twenty-sixth. And our council meeting and our reorganization meeting is on Wednesday, January second, starting at six-thirty. The reorg will start at six-thirty and the council meeting will proceed right after that. And that's it, just wishing everyone a Merry Christmas.
And speaking for the mayor tonight, Dan DiVirgilio, do you have any closing comments?
Uh, well, I'm glad I could give out the lighting contest awards tonight and sit here for the mayor. Uh, that being said, the mayor wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
Thank you. Um, and lastly for myself, um, as I said with the first speaker, I sent a couple of emails out to your group, um, I asked them to be passed along. Um, and I also came up with the fact that if Alex wasn't able to satisfy the questions you had here tonight, then I urge you to have a meeting with us or with the mayor or Alex and we can work out any of the... So, you know, we're in support of trying to find a middle ground here and try to help you with the questions or concerns that remain. Uh, obviously, as you could hear tonight, there are a lot of logistics going on with the course. It's obviously, uh, you know, a busy course. Um, and yes, we want, the leagues are as important as our golfers, so, as our non-league golfers. So, you know, we can, as I said, my card's up here. We can have a meeting, talk about it, if there's any remaining concerns. Uh, but please take a look at the email if you haven't that I sent. Uh, it invites each and every one of you or the people that are in charge to sit down and talk to work out any way we can keep all of your groups together during your tee times or somehow reach a happy medium or a middle ground. So we are up here, we're in support. Again, as my colleague Bob said, we do not preside over these kinds of issues, but we're willing to help you get the resolution or solution that you need. Um, that would be up to Alex, who I have the utmost faith in, and the mayor, uh, our campus. So those are the avenues and the process. Uh, we're happy to hear what you had to say tonight. We're happy you reached out to us through email, but, um, we will be willing to meet if that needs to come to it. So, uh, I think you're hearing unanimous support for trying to find a, a solution for you. Um, secondly, uh, as far as this weekend, you know, this is the year, I always look at, you know, this time of year as a season of giving, okay? You know, Christmas is great to get gifts, but it's even better to, you know, give to people who have less. And I've seen that, uh, this weekend with the Community Church Drive with Lumber City Church. Uh, I know each and every one of the people up here at this, on this dais have painstakingly gone out throughout the entire weekend to try, there was a shortfall from the school district on some of the things that they thought they would have as far as donations for families. Uh, so, you know, we were asked to step up and we did it big, as well as a lot of you in the community. Because the Box of Hope, if you're not familiar with it, it's a Lumber City community event that they will take sponsor families that are in need. We collect and gather food, um, kits, we compose these food kits. We collect and gather food kits. We compose these food kits. And we give them and distribute them on Wednesday night. And I honestly have to say, it's a good feeling to give something. A lot of people like to receive, but I think it's giving from your heart that really is about what makes me happy about this community. Whether it be Carol Bauer's Meals on Wheels in the back, or many of the charities, the food pantry, the Peter Putter and Jelly Drive. That's what it's all about, folks. It's, it's the season of giving, you know. And let's not take pride in the fact that, you know, we're giving and let's see who's, you know, going to give us something back. Let's give from our hearts and see the smiles on the faces that received the gifts that we're giving during this blessed time of year. I think that's something that I just wanted to give everyone to take away. It's the holidays. Reach out to your neighbor. Reach out to people in need. That's what it's all about. That's what the community is about. Whether you're an elected official or you're not an elected official. We're neighbors. We're residents. We're citizens. We're taxpayers. Please embrace the holidays and reach out to those in need. With that, I wish you all a Merry Christmas. Thank you so much for attending tonight and God bless.
Take the motion, will you?
Take the motion, will you? Thank you. Make a motion, Drew. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
If any kids need a signature, come on up.